Meeting to order, and we're delighted to have Dr. Veronica Coleman, pastor of New Jerusalem Ministries, to come forward and give the invocation.
Good evening. Let us pray. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who has brought us thus far along the way. We pause this evening to say thank you. Thank you for your faithfulness and thank you for your strength. Thank you for those who serve this city with their time and talent, and at times with great sacrifice. Grant them the fortitude to carry out their assignments with integrity and honor. Tonight, we pray that the power of your divine presence would grant wisdom, and that your wisdom would bring guidance. Guidance such that every deliberation, every decision, and every outcome is in perfect alignment with your will for this city and its people. We pray that you would grant the leaders of this city the temerity to tackle tough issues with the confidence that comes from knowing that they are doing what is right in your sight. May they work towards a future reality where all the citizens of our city will prosper and thrive. We pray that this city strives to become the beloved community, a community in which everyone is cared for, absent of poverty, hunger, and hate. May we stand like a city on a hill, a beacon of righteousness, where justice is known to roll down like water. We end this prayer, as we started, filled with gratitude that comes from knowing that we are servants chosen to do this work for such a time as this. We ask this prayer in your holy and divine name. Amen.
Thank you so much. And at this point, may we also ask for a time of reflection with a moment of silence, to do reflection ourselves for building our nation and our community. A moment of silence. Thank you. And now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We just stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Thank you so much. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
I ask for a motion for the certification of the closed session.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Votes open?
Just one moment, please. Votes open. Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Thank you. And now I move for the motion to certify the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of January 17, 2023.
So moved.
Motion and a second? Okay.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we take it, in terms of presentations, we're going to be honor some very important part of our history and, you know, and some other very important organizations. At this point, I ask Council Lady Henley if she would read the resolution and memoriam to Earl M. Tebow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to read this. It's in honor of a man for whom I had a great deal of respect and admiration, Mr. Tebow. Whereas Earl M. Tebow was a lifelong resident of Old Princess Anne County and pillar of the community, and whereas Earl Tebow was elected in 1963 to the first city council of the newly established City of Virginia Beach and continued serving to 1972, serving as the vice mayor from 1970 to 1972. And whereas Earl Tebow was one of the last surviving members of the first city council of Virginia Beach, and whereas Earl Tebow was born and raised in Blackwater, previously Princess Anne County, he began farming as a youth, raising fruit and vegetable crops on his parents' farm. Years later, he would purchase his own farm to raise purebred bred black Angus cattle, hogs, soybeans, corn, and wheat. And whereas Earl Tebow received the City of Virginia Beach 4-H Grand Champion in 1967 for one of his black Angus cattle, and whereas Earl Tebow was named Virginia Beach Man of the Year in Agriculture in 1992, this award is presented to an individual who has made a significant contribution to the agricultural community. And whereas Earl Tebow was also a faith-based man, he served as a deacon and trustee for the Blackwater Baptist Church, where he was an active member for over 80 years. And whereas Earl Tebow also served as a member of the Creed's Warden Club, Princess Anne Rotary Club, and the Princess Anne Lions Club, all organizations that dedicate time and service to the community. And now, therefore, be it resolved, on Tuesday, December 20, 2022, Earl M. Tebow passed away in his home at the age of 93. And be it resolved that the city council hereby honors the memory of Earl M. Tebow and extends condolences to his family, friends, and loved ones in memory of Earl M. Tebow, adopted by the city council of the City of Virginia Beach, the 7th day of February 2023, and present this resolution duly signed by each member of the Virginia Beach City Council.
And there are members of the family here for Mr. Tebow. Please come up.
I would just like to say that as I sit here and think back 60 years to what those first council people were having to do during this time in establishing all of the ordinances and all of the things to make this city get started, just great admiration for the people who were doing that. And Mr. Tebow must have been all of about 30 years old at the time. So I look forward to being able to give this to the family in his memory.
Right ahead. Oh, please, say some words up at the podium, please.
Would you like to say a few words more?
We thank you. It was his pleasure to have been a member of the city, first city council, back in the early days, the first city council for Virginia Beach. Thank you all. You're part of it today. Thank you all very much. Thank you, city council.
And thank you. You better believe it. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Yeah, Mrs. Henley has found out what I know. It's a long walk to get there and get back into the new place here. Okay, and next, we have a very special presentation. And Council Lady Sabrina Wooton is going to be reading it. And it has for the African American Heritage Month proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas people of African descent first arrived in Virginia in 1619, and whereas the first persons of African descent in Virginia Beach were likely to have been three individuals transported by Captain Adam Thurlgood by 1637. And whereas the general commemoration of the historical contributions of African Americans in Virginia and elsewhere first established as Negro History Week in 1926 by a native Virginian, Carter G. Woodson. And whereas President Gerald R. Ford expanded this commemoration in celebration to encompass Black History Month in 1976. And whereas the theme of commemoration in 2021 was the Black family, representation, identity, and diversity. And whereas the institution of slavery in America, Virginia and locally created significant challenges to maintaining the family unit for African Americans. And whereas through these challenges, the African American family has persevered and developed strong bonds extending through many generations throughout the community. And whereas the African American community has found purpose through family and through the church. And whereas African American churches, such as Union Baptist Church in Virginia Beach, provide the spiritual strength and welfare of families. And whereas the Union Baptist Church began in this community 158 years ago during the American Civil War. And whereas one of the first schools for African American students was established on the grounds of Union Baptist Church in 1868. And whereas the Princess Anne County Training School first held classes in 1934 at the Union Baptist Church. And whereas Betty Forbes Williams, a longtime member of Union Baptist Church, became the second supervisor of Negro elementary schools in Princess Anne County in 1946. And whereas in 1962, Betty Forbes Williams became the only African American to have a school named in her honor in Virginia Beach. And whereas the Union Baptist Church congregation with over 300 members now worships in the church's 5th building. And whereas in 2012, Union Baptist Church elected Reverend D. Thomasine Reed as their pastor, giving her the honor of being the first Black female called to pastor a traditional Baptist church in the Tidewater area. And whereas in February 2013, Union Baptist Church dedicated the Reverend W. Samuel Walton Family Life Center. And whereas African Americans have overcome enslavement, discrimination, and adversity to make positive contributions in all areas of enterprise and service in Virginia Beach, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the United States of America. And whereas the mayor and city council support the establishment of the Virginia African American Cultural Center in Virginia Beach as a hub for African American culture and history. Now, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Dyer of the City of Virginia Beach, we do hereby proclaim February 2023 African American History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well done, Council Lady Wooton. My next duty, which I embrace, is to read a proclamation for American Heart Month. Whereas February is American Heart Month, and every year, February 7 through 14, is observed as Congenital Heart Disease Awareness Week, where CHD refers to a range of structural problems present at birth that affect normal heart function, and is the most common type of birth defect in our nation, affecting nearly 1% of births each year. Raising awareness among medical professionals, researchers, families, and the community about CHDs can lead to prevention and increased access to care. And whereas conquering CHD, Virginia serves as the state chapter for the District of Columbia, Virginia, and Maryland by providing outreach and support to the CHD community. Therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim February 7 through 14, 2023, Congenital Heart Disease Awareness Week in Virginia Beach. And I call upon all citizens and members within government agencies, public and private institutions, business and schools in Virginia Beach to increase the awareness of congenital heart disease, to understand prevention and additional access to care for those diagnosed. And thank you. Really appreciate the presentations today. Next, we're going to open a public hearing, and it's regarding the change of polling location for precinct 0040 and request a waiver to administer a split precinct for precinct 0069. Are there any speakers?
Mayor, we had one speaker sign up, Barbara Messner, but I do not see her. So there are no speakers.
Okay, I will then close the public hearing, and I will read the speaker policy prior to the consent agenda. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speech for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion in the quorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all the viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody to speak on multiple consent items?
Barbara Messner had signed up. I do not see her in the audience. So, no, there is no one signed up to speak on all items.
I'll read the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, under K, ordinances and resolutions. Number one, ordinance to amend City Code Section 10-1 regarding the change of polling location for precinct 0040 to Union Baptist Church at 4608 South Boulevard, and to request a waiver to administer a split precinct for precinct 0069 requested by the Virginia Beach Electoral Board. We move to defer that until February 21. Number two is the ordinance to adopt a city council policy regarding city council agendas requested by the city council with Ms. Henley voting no. Number three, the ordinance to appropriate $223,801 of fund balance from the General Fund to the FY 2022-23 Parks and Recreation operating budget, and authorize 5.93 positions regarding Parks After Dark Pilot Program requested by Mayor Dyer and Vice Mayor Wilson. And upon reading the consent, I'd like to make a comment on this item. Number four, the ordinance to amend Section 2.6 of the City Code regarding membership of the Resort Advisory Commission RAC requested by Vice Mayor Wilson and council members Remick and Taylor. Number five is a resolution to adopt an updated city council policy regarding the management of tax-supported debt. Number six is the ordinance to amend the Parks and Recreation Commission membership. Number seven is the ordinance to amend Section 2-396 regarding the Planning Commission membership. Number eight has been pulled. Number nine, resolution to amend the city transition area into facility traffic area Citizens Advisory Committee membership. Number 10 is the resolution to amend the Bayfront Advisory Commission membership. Number 11 is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property located at the rear of 845 Romde Lane regarding maintaining two existing shrubs and construct and maintain six-foot-tall vinyl fence, District 9. Number 12, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property known as Treasure Canal located at the rear of 2004 Compass Creek regarding construction and maintain two four-pile boat lifts, a vinyl bulkhead, a wharf, two piers, and granite quarry stone riprap, and to maintain two existing concrete bag bulkhead and existing riprap, and that is in District 8. Number 13 is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of a city-owned 300-foot canal easement located at the rear of 1960 Timberstone Drive regarding construction and maintain a wood deck, flax mat, two sections of riprap, and wood pier, and that's in District 5. Number 14, district ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property known as Lake Joyce and the 20-foot strip of land around Lake Joyce located at the rear of 4501 Palms Point Road regarding construction and maintain a bulkhead and backfield not more than two feet from existing bulkhead with two return walls, a floating deck, a mooring pile, an L-shaped jet deck dock, and to maintain an existing pavement pool deck, a pavement patio deck, a stepped walkway, and two chain-link fences, and that is in District 9. Number 15 is the ordinance to accept an in-kind grant from the University of Florida regarding Shelter Medicine Program regarding animal shelter concentration. Number 16 is an ordinance to appropriate $4.5 million, no, excuse me, $1.5 million of fund balance from the Tourism Investment Program, and authorize the city manager to execute a sponsorship agreement with Live Nation Worldwide for the Beach It Musical Festival with Mr. Taylor voting no. Number 17 has been pulled. Number 18 is the ordinance to transfer $140,000 within the Parks and Recreation operating budget regarding to fund the summer youth employment program through the remainder of the fiscal year. Number 19 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $341,001 in grant funds from the Eastern Virginia Medical School for the FY 2022-23 Parks and Recreation operating budget regarding support for the out-of-school time program. Number 20 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $190,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services for the FY 2022-23 Human Services operating budget, and authorize one position regarding support information technology infrastructure. Number 21 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $14,354.53 from the Virginia Department of Forestry to the FY 2022-23 Parks and Recreation operating budget for projects related to public education, outdoor recreation, and forest conservation initiatives.
Open a public hearing on planning?
I apologize to interrupt, Vice Mayor. However, K8 can be on consent. It's L8 that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay, K8 is now on consent.
And L8 is not?
L8 is not. That is correct.
L8 is on consent or not?
L8 is not on the consent agenda. We have speakers.
Okay.
K8 can be on the consent.
And might I also ask that we note that Item 16 is as amended, has passed out at the informal?
And L8, I said it was pulled.
I apologize. Sorry.
Okay, is K8 also pulled?
No, K8 can be on the consent agenda.
So K8 is on consent.
L8 needs to be pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay.
K8 is regarding beaches and waterways. I'm sorry.
But L8 is on consent.
No, L8 needs to be pulled from the consent agenda. Planning number 8 needs to be pulled.
Oh, well then, let me go back and read K8.
K8 needs to be read as part of the consent agenda. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so K8 is the ordinance to amend Section 6162 of the City Code regarding the beaches and waterways commission membership. And on the, as Mr. Stiles said, on the number 16, there is an alternate version. Okay, so you've opened up planning. Number one is KM Cash Construction Corporation for Advance regarding Section 4.4 of the subdivision regulation regarding construction, excuse me, configuration, two lots, as with 3536 Boyd Road, District 3. Number two is going to be deferred till March 7, and that's Toni Sadie and Lena Sadie, and that is in District 9. And then number three is Lucy Gualtney Clay Living Trust for a change in nonconforming regarding renovate a secondary dwelling at 102A and 102B, 45th Street, District 6. Number four, Aggie VB Holdings LLC for a modification of proffers regarding to amend the proffered conceptual plan associated with the 2014 conditional rezoning request and add a 2,100 square foot outside cafe and two 814 square foot storage units at 1925 Fisher Arch, and that is in District 2. Okay, number five is pulled. Number six is LaShawna Powell Holdings regarding assembly use of 701 South Military Highway, Suite F, District 1. Number seven, this is going to be deferred till March 7, VB BTS 2 LLC, Virginia Electric and Power Company, District 8. Then number eight is pulled.
I'm sorry, and just one other item on planning number two that is deferred till March the 7, 2023 as well.
I'm sorry. Would you say that again?
Number two, Toni Sadie and Lena Sadie. The request was for that to be deferred to March the 7, 2023.
I said that.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say that. I apologize.
I said at the beginning. I said.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, discussion, Rosemary, did you want to say something?
I did want to say something about the Parks After Dark Program. This is a program that the mayor's Virginia Beach version of the Violence Task Force Prevention has been working on, and the Parks and Rec went out to LA, and they found this wonderful program that really helped curb youth violence in LA. So I'm really, really pleased that the city manager was able to find the funds that we could start this, and it's going to start in District 4 and the Western Bayside area. So this is some preliminary funding so that they can get started on it, and I think this is really going to help the young people that live in our city.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Vote is open.
Just, Mr. Mayor, just a point of privilege, sir. I just wanted to recognize our former police chief, Mr. Jim Suviera, in the audience, who's taken, I know, a lead role with your Youth Violence Prevention Task Force.
Much thanks for what you do. Much thanks for what you do.
Yes, he was our co-chair. I'm sorry I didn't say that out there.
And Councilmember Taylor, did you want to have a verbal nay vote on item 16? That, okay. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move back to ordinances.
No, I'm sorry. Dr. Ross Hammond, I need your vote, please. And Mr. Schuman, Councilmember Schuman?
I voted.
It's not showing. Can you just give me a verbal vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting Councilmember Taylor's nay vote on item number 16.
Okay, moving back to ordinances, number 17, to transfer 349,958 of vacancy savings within the general fund to the 2022-23 Communications Office operating budget and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with the University of Virginia Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service Ray Community Engagement for the city's election system.
The first speaker, the only speaker actually now is Melissa Lukason.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening. I have so much to say, and three minutes is never enough. So let me start with the mayor. It's mighty white of you to have a councilwoman wooten read the African-American Heritage Month while you work hard to continue disenfranchising the black voters in our community. It's no surprise, but I oppose the city spending $349,000 to get community engagement for our election system. I know you have the votes to proceed with this disingenuous public input campaign, but I came here to share some of my observations. In February 2021, a special session convened because our mayor and former vice mayor were caught interfering with House Bill 2198, a bill that would prevent election systems in localities statewide from disenfranchising minority voters. The mayor's defense was that the state delegate should have kissed the ring of the mayor for approval even though the bill was not specific to our city. How presumptuous to try to influence legislation that affects the people of the entire state of Virginia. In March of 2021, a federal court judge's ruling eliminated the citywide at-large scheme we had been using to marginalize people of color in this city since 1963, violating the Voting Rights Act of 1965 since its inception. Racism runs so deep in Virginia Beach that city leadership gave the middle finger to the federal government for almost 60 years. In 2022, the white majority of this body voted to spend millions of our tax dollars to appeal the high court's decision. Unfortunately, the city won on appeal due to the passing of HB 2198 and ignored the years of injustice done to the citizens of Virginia Beach. With that, without enough time for political maneuvering, we held our first election under the new boundaries of 10 districts. In November of 2022, we elected the youngest, most diverse council in our city's history due to the court's decision. Last week, a few council members called another special session to address concerns that our mayor, vice mayor, and others were caught attempting to interfere with and stop House Bill 1528. This legislation was to stop the appointment process for filling vacancies on council and mandating special elections. Appointments in a city our size is nothing more than a plan of secession. It is a built-in pipeline to maintain political power. The persistent opposition from white leaders in Virginia Beach provides a clear picture of the established history of discrimination that creates persistent racial disparities in our city. Councilman Schuman believes that tribalism will prevail if we maintain a 10-1 system. From my perspective, you are trading votes for your district at the expense of having a fair and representative electoral system. Through my lens, you are the one participating in tribalism, sir. Mr. Mayor, make sure you send Councilman Schuman an edible arrangement or something for helping you with your subversive efforts to stay in power. I'm looking forward to the discussion after public comments so some of you can word salad your way and do overexplaining why you think you know better than the data-driven results from the 2022 election. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, at this point, we'll open it up for a motion and then for comment.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
Move on a second. Okay, any comment?
I'd like to make one little comment.
Yeah.
We just had a public survey of our citizens, and one of the top things, their highest priority, was that our citizens wanted to be engaged in the decision-making process. And what's more important than the voting system? So there's going to be an extensive opportunity to engage our citizens, which is really what they have identified was really important to them. And the Weldon Cooper Center is incredible, well, that Beyond Reproach Center that is the brain power in this group is pretty astounding, and they deal with local governments and they work with the data throughout the state, and so much with VML and the General Assembly, they look to Weldon Cooper for data-driven decisions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of 8 to 3, you have approved the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I guess we move on to planning items now, and...
We have 17.
Seven, we just did 17. Okay, now onto planning, and let's see, and that would be item 5, Legacy Haven Animal Rescue, Elaine Swartz for a conditional use permit, Ray Residential Kennel at 5433 Hunt Club Drive, District 1.
The applicant is Elaine Swartz.
I'm hoping I can get my words in in three minutes. We'll see. I'm Elaine Swartz. I'm the owner of the property at 5433 Hunt Club Drive. I'm also the founder of Legacy Haven Animal Rescue. This is the final step on a long, painful journey full of sadness. Needing a residential kennel permit or having so many dogs was never the intention of the rescue. During an extended illness, the person who committed to care for the dogs, my household and myself, did things in my name that I was not aware of. As I regained my health and learned of the issues, I questioned things and demanded answers. This demand resulted in an animal call to animal control on April 27, 1922. I'm sorry, 2022. That call was made by Susan Bound as a means of revenge for removing her from my home and having her served with a protective order. Ms. Bound first moved into my home when she found herself homeless and needing a place for her and her dogs to land. If animal control report is read carefully, it is clear to see that the person making the call has a personal knowledge of the house and the environment, and the environment of her making since she was supposed to be caring for the dogs at that point. As I recovered, it became obvious to me she was not doing so, and I was demanding answers. When I asked about dog vetting and shots during my illness, Ms. Bound informed me it was taken care of. As I began asking for the vet records to report to the Board of Directors, she couldn't find them where the dogs had not been vetted. She could not account for the fund rates to pay for the dogs' care. She didn't have an answer. A year later, I'm still trying to get that answer. Today, there are only four dogs left in the house, and I'm fully back in control. Some of the dogs were euthanized because of their health or age issues. Some have been adopted into loving homes. Others were transferred to other organizations. The call to animal control in 2018 was made by a Regina Quinn of Blue Angels Pit Bull Rescue as a means to harm the rescue that I was fostering for at that time. The rescue was Operation Save a Shelter Dog. If that report is read in its entirety, you can see that the complaint stated there were 20 dogs in the house in bad health and conditions. The ACO who responded to the call found seven dogs, all in good health. Operation Save a Shelter Dog was advised the extra dogs needed to be removed. Now to the letters against this permit request. Ms. Doris Bossi has once again found something to complain about. She has complained about everything from tree removal after hurricane to the building of my six-foot fence, the grass, the dogs, you name it. She complains. If she's not complaining about me, she's complaining about one of the other neighbors. Mr. and Mrs. Mr., I have no idea who they are. After checking the location of their home tonight, I believe they are not fully informed of my plans and are complaining because others are. Ms. Jessica Eaton is another neighbor who has found another reason to complain about me. Apparently, there's a double standard here. It's okay for her to allow her cat to run loose, but it's not okay for me to have dogs who live in my house and play in my backyard. My dogs are not walked in the neighborhood because of the animals like her cat without leashes. I also find it very disturbing that Ms. Easton found the need to disclose her position and title within the city of Virginia Beach. I certainly hope it was not meant to influence the Planning Commission and/or the city council. Ms. Jane Wright Phillips lives at the same house, the same address as Ms. Eaton, and I believe she's simply parroting the words. Mr. James Easton's home on Bird Haven Court is not near mine on Hunt Club, so I fail to see the reason for his objection. He is, however, sadly misinformed and letting his lack of knowledge cause unwarranted fears. Pit bulls are not the only breed I rescue. I do not discriminate. I rescue all breeds. I've done everything from a pug to a wyman rider to labs, boxers, and several mixed breeds that not even animal control can figure out what's in there. As I stated previously, I do not walk any of my dogs in the neighborhood because of animals off-leash and the misinformed residents such as Mr. Eaton. The dogs play in the real yard that is surrounded by a six-foot fence in groups of one or two. Ms. Blackwell is also misinformed about the types of dogs I rescue. She is also jumping to a lot of conclusions. I've already addressed many of her concerns in my response to the others. First of all, Legacy Haven does not have a website. We have a Facebook page only. How can she possibly know what my backyard looks like unless she's climbing the six-foot fence? How does she know where I'm taking pictures of the dogs? Also, the elderly lady she's commenting on in her letter of dispute never said a word to me about the dogs, the noise, or the smell, and we talk over the fence frequently. It's really a shame that my neighbors have chosen to express their issues with me in a public forum instead of speaking to me directly. Perhaps they were afraid of finding out there were more problems than they were seeing and not asking if they could help in some way. I've spent a considerable amount of time tonight answering comments against me and Legacy Haven and not telling you about what we do and accomplish. Legacy Haven rescues what are called the last-chance dogs. The dogs many rescues and shelters are euthanized because of their health or behavioral issues. The sick dogs are nursed back to health. The behavior issues are trained to correct the bad behaviors, and then the dogs are adopted into their loving homes. When I started rescue over 20 years ago, I found an amazing quote by Chief Dan George, and I quote, "If you talk to the animals, they will talk to you, and you will know each other. If you do not talk to them, you will not know them, and what you do not know, you will fear. What one fears, one seeks to destroy." End quote. Sadly, I believe that this is true also in people and between people. I can only pray that you've heard my words tonight, read the notes from the Planning Commission, and know that I only have the best interest of the dogs at heart. I'm praying you will grant the kennel permit and let me continue to my work with the dogs. Thank you for your time and your patience in listening to me.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
I'm open to questions.
Any questions?
If anyone has questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Willie Simmons-Canty.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Willie J. Simmons-Canty, 5434 Hunt Club Drive. Reasons for my participation at this meeting. I oppose a conditional use permit for a residential kennel to house 10 adult dogs in the community. During the year 2022, I saw the animal control unit at the above address several times. The animal control unit was called due to the concerns regarding the care of the dogs and the property. On January 10, 2023, two animal control units were at the above address. On January 11, 2023, a hearing was held regarding the property owner who had a desire to receive a conditional use for a residential kennel to house 10 adult dogs. I registered and listened to the hearing virtually. The result of that hearing was a unanimous decision in favor of the property owner not being given a conditional use permit to house 10 dogs. Today, the city council is having a hearing regarding the same. Between the last meeting and this meeting, what changes have taken place to prompt another hearing within less than 30 days? As a result, I am here with 10 questions to ask the property owner to determine if any changes have been made based on the virtual hearing of January 11, 2023. The questions will require a yes or no answer with the exception of question number three. Am I permitted to ask the questions?
You can read the questions.
Just read them? Okay. Number one, are you familiar as an applicant with the Animal Welfare Act and the Animal Welfare Regulation from the U.S. Department of Agriculture? Two, are you licensed for humane care and treatment of animals? Number three, what breed of dogs will you house in the kennel in your home should this request be honored by the city council? Is your home designed and properly prepared to handle safe and healthy conditions for 10 dogs to live physically and mentally? Example, physical and mental well-being, cleanliness, exercise, illnesses, free from anxiety, stress, and becoming emotionally. I would like to break question fold down into different areas of mental and physical condition of animals. Is your home designed and adequately prepared to handle 10 dogs when it comes to housing, feeding, watering, sanitation, ventilation, weather condition, separation of females from males, exercising? Will the environment of these dogs promote the adequate psychological...
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your coming.
Ms. Swartz, as the applicant, you have three-minute rebuttal if you would like to come back to the lectern.
Okay, I'm going to try to remember as many of her questions as I can and try to answer them. Yes, the house is set up to care for the dogs in a way that provides them their exercise, what rescuers call enrichment, what Virginia Beach Animal Control calls enrichment. They spend quality time running and playing in the yard, weather permitting. If not, there are rooms set up within the home where they get one-on-time with me to play, get their enrichment, get their training. We endeavor when we train to get the dogs prepared for and qualified for what is called a canine good citizen, which is the temperament test. Sanitation, yes, I scoop quite a bit every day. In climate weather, we just come inside. All dogs are spayed and neutered per the requirements for the state of Virginia. I endeavor to make sure they are spayed and neutered before they enter the house. I really don't want to deal with an unaltered dog in the house. It's just me personally. I'm not sure what her other questions were, but I think I covered a lot of the questions in my previous statements. If there are any more questions?
Nope, thank you very much.
Yep.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ms. Swartz, I certainly appreciate the work you're doing with your animal rescue, but I'm going to deny this request based on the fact that 10 dogs on Hunt Club is just, it's not in the right posture to have 10 dogs. And based on the history and the research that I've done on this, there are some concerning issues that have been brought up referencing animal control being to your residents, and I understand you said that that had been cleaned up and it was a misunderstanding. Well, it's still here in the record, and I just don't think that you're in the right posture to handle 10 dogs there on Hunt Club. So please keep doing the good work that you can do, but, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to move to deny this conditional use permit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote is open. Vote is open. Motion to deny.
By a vote of 11 to zero, this application has been denied.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then Planning Ordinance Eight to amend the City zoning ordinance, CZO, Section 901, Ray, allow for ice vending machines as accessories, accessory to use in shopping centers in B2, B3, and B4 zoning districts.
We have two speakers. The first speaker is Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Tim Davis.
Good evening.
Good evening. You know, the car crashes are all over the place. That's why I'm late. I don't appreciate the fact that I can't speak on everything I signed up to speak on. Okay, ice vending machines, changing the district codes, sponsored by Vice Mayor Wilson. You know, everything y'all voted on, you know, is outrageous. You all have conflicts. I watched part of this. You shouldn't be, shouldn't be voting, and there's no due process at all. I'm tired of the...
Can you kindly...
Do not interrupt my minutes. I'm late because you're negligent with the roads.
Stick to the topic.
I am. I'm talking about...
As instructed in the instructions.
Like I said, you make the rules for other people. You don't make them for me. And anybody else that came late, you would let them speak? You know, I watched all the discussions about due process. I appreciate the comments by Amelia Ross Hammond, Chris Taylor, even Berluci, but it's a little bit late. And the rules that are changing, city attorney and his staff, they give opinions. It's not legal. You have conflicts.
The item has to do with ice machines, ma'am.
I know. You can't change the zoning codes for whatever you want. Vice Mayor Wilson, you have a conflict. You know, all this stuff, the reason I'm late is because you don't take care of my district and anyone else's district. You should be at large. And you don't need vending machines. Everything is commercial in the entire oceanfront. You know, this ties in with, you know, the 1.5 million for, you know, you don't need, you have, what do you call it? All your false advertising all over the place, all over the city, shopping centers, everything is your advertising platform. So, you know, I would have been here on time if it wasn't for all the accidents, serious accidents. People are dying on these roads, and you're all liable...
Thank you very much.
Except for the new ones.
The next speaker is Tim Davis.
Tim Davis, 30 Elm Avenue, Newport News. I'm an owner of five machines in the Tidewater area, and appreciate, Ms. Wilson, your sponsoring this ordinance. I'm speaking in favor of this ordinance, but, and I know it's on the consent agenda. There was a, one of the restrictions in the ordinance, draft ordinance, was a height restriction of 15 feet. And that was based on the planning department's research on the internet, and our machines, which is the standard machines across the country, there's 3,500 machines across the country, is over 15 feet. So I made it known to the planning department about that after the planning commission had already voted on it. And so I got a call from the planning department, and we talked about it, and they were not opposed to an increase to that height limitation to 18 feet. So I want to bring that to your attention. That just gives a little leeway to put the parapet around the top of the machines and get the machines, the machinery covered properly. So that's the only thing I really wanted to address to you. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Rosemary?
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, it's nice to meet, see Mr. Davis, as we've only talked on the phone. He came to me months and months ago. This has been a very long process, because it looked... No, no, that's just, it's fine. Thank you. And what he asked, was asking for seemed pretty reasonable to me, and I think there's, we have a lot of campgrounds and all that that need, that need ice. So we have the alternative version. We talked about that this afternoon, from 15 feet to 18 feet, that we will be voting on tonight. So Ice Like Prago is in there. So I'd like to move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote's open.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you have approved the ordinance.
Okay, are we ready for appointments? No appointments tonight? Do we have any unfinished business? And Amelia, I understand you have some new business to bring forward.
Yes, Mr. Dyer, Mayor Dyer. It gives me pleasure to recognize one of our very specifically engaged African-American organization, the ladies of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And we thank you for visiting us, ask you to please stand so that we can give you a warm welcome. Please stand.
Any other new business? Okay, we are adjourned, and we're going to be doing open mic. Thank you. And welcome, welcome everyone.